We will go to our next item, which is the superintendent update, Dr. Swift.
Thank you, President Johnson and trustees and members of the community who have joined us this evening. The content of our update is around the communication that we've shared today with our community and last night with our staff. The topic is the transition to begin the in-school hybrid learning option. We do appreciate that a large number of folks have joined us this evening. I want to say right at the outset, because we respect the time of everyone coming out, that there is no additional announcement coming this evening. Trustees, you're all aware, we've been working over many, many days. This is the same content that we've already shared with the community, although we look forward to, of course, as always, the board's questions and commentary on this preliminary plan. We've come a long way through this COVID crisis, and I believe everyone understands that events are unfolding and changing very rapidly, even now 10 months in. So while I appreciate that folks are very careful to note statements that were made many months ago or the details of metrics from before, we all recognize that the situation is changing dramatically. The New Year's update that was sent on Friday afternoon, the governor spoke on Friday afternoon, so of course, we were not aware of the content of her remarks in advance. So I do want to respond to all those who wrote to say they were disappointed that we didn't respond to the governor's remarks in that Friday afternoon statement. Just want to make folks aware that that was the New Year's update that had been created prior to that information from the governor. There are unfolding good, solid developments. As you know, trustees, one is the arrival of the COVID vaccine. And then secondly, as we piloted over winter break, Ms. Bacalord was in a state-level briefing today again on the antigen testing program that we understand will be coming available for both students and staff. This is just in the early stages. And yet, these are two commitments from our governor that truly do change our ability to look at a reopening school. So let's walk through where we are, trustees, on this preliminary set of facts in the direction in which we're headed. We are setting our direction now toward offering a hybrid in-school learning option. We do hear from parents every day who do not prefer to return to school at this time. So as we promised last summer, when we passed that 256-page overall plan that has many, many details inside of it, we promised from the beginning that we would continue to offer, that when we move to hybrid, we would continue to offer the fully virtual opportunity, and we will do so. I just want to thank our teachers and staff, our parents, our community, because we understand that this has been among the most challenging times that any of us will ever face. And so we have heard stories, remarkable stories, the sacrifices that folks in our community, our parents, our students, our staff, our teachers, our leaders, sacrifices that have been made to support our students through this very challenging year. We're going to bring our students back to school in a safe and healthy and responsible way. We respect and recognize, though, that our parents will need to have that choice, and they will need to have full information in order to make their best choice. So we will be engaging in parent meetings. I have my regular frequent PTO exec board meeting tomorrow morning. We will be with groups in every school community to review what the hybrid schooling option looks like. Trustees, you'll recall from our original plan that we are required, per the governor's executive order, to continue to socially distance, to fully mask, and to take several other mitigation steps to ensure safety as best we can in the in-school environment. So during February, we'll be hosting meetings so that parents understand, those who are interested in the in-school hybrid option, so that they will understand what to expect. Parents will be asked to complete the screening for their student using an app on the phone, and that is required on a daily basis, per the governor's order. We will talk about what the schedule will look like, the daily schedule. Students will continue in their same classes with their same teacher as we move to this hybrid learning opportunity. Just a reminder, just as we've talked about since last summer, that hybrid learning model is a two-day-per-week learning in school in continuing the three days a week of the virtual schooling. Wednesday continuing to be an asynchronous day. As we've said all along, we're beginning with our youngest and our students with the greatest needs first, and that will be stage one. So as we shared today in our message to parents and to our community, stage one will include preschool, young fives, and kinder students. These are students who, in many cases, have not attended the school before. So this will be an opportunity for them to learn their school. Our students with high-level special education needs will also be in this first group. Those are our self-contained classrooms at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And then we will also have groups of middle and high school students that will begin, who will begin in that first phase. Those students with the greatest needs, who have struggled the most in virtual learning, will be a part of that early march, stage one. Now, following that, the stages are set to occur at intervals of a week. Certainly, we believe this is a reasonable expectation. But as we know, COVID and our experience with this pandemic, things do change in the moment. So we will talk in just a little bit about what is the process to confirm those dates so that our parents, our students, our staff, and our community can prepare in advance. Stage two is targeted to include first and second graders. These are the students whose parents are choosing a hybrid in-school learning model. Stage three includes third through fifth grade students. And then that takes us right up to spring break. Following spring break is the opportunity for those middle and high school students who are choosing an in-school hybrid learning option. I do want to note that the guidance from all of our public health and MDHHS authorities is to maintain the six feet of social distance and to limit the exposure of our students into cohorts. So I do want to note that middle and high school will not achieve the single cohort because of the breadth of their subject matter and their learning and educational experience. At secondary, we will be limiting that number of classroom cohorts each day to three. So following the schedule that they've been on all year, they will be in about three cohorts. And if they ride a bus, then that would be an additional group that they would be exposed to. So this is the reason that the governor's guidance, our reopening plan, and much of the guidance that we receive is that it is best to begin this process with our younger students and then move into the process with our older students. We have stated three contingencies for the return to school. And while we had not planned months ago to await the vaccine, that is absolutely true. We did not understand for sure how quickly that would be coming. Now that we understand that the vaccine is here, it seems in the best interest of safety and of health for our teachers to be able to have their vaccination appointments. So we're very pleased with the valiant efforts of our public health team. We know that the governor is lobbying at the federal level for us to have the vaccine supply. And that vaccination process is overseen by our Washtenaw County Health Department team. We know that the educators included in 1B, and we're very grateful for the governor's move to prioritize educators in 1B. There are very few other positions that have the small classroom setting, the longer school day exposure. Classroom teachers and school teams and leaders have a unique exposure, and students do, as they arrive to those classrooms. So now that the vaccine is here, we are very interested in the progress of that vaccination effort. We are also going to continue to keep an eye on the level of community spread. We're all very much aware that our students will not have the opportunity to be vaccinated this year. And so we do need to continue to keep an eye on the level of COVID community spread. As we've shared over several weeks now, we're no longer looking at those limited metrics that we set many months ago. We're really looking at that wider spectrum. And for folks who may not have noticed that in my three previous superintendent updates, I have listed those metrics. They are also on our website, right with the metrics. Trustees, we've discussed them many times. But the guidance is to ensure that we're able to conduct prompt contact tracing, that we're able to have readily available testing and timely testing results, that we keep an eye on the strain, on medical and hospital infrastructure, and those kinds of concerns. So there are a much wider set of guidance components that we've discussed over several weeks. We are not using only the prior very limited metrics that we were aware of. That was our working knowledge many months ago, but we do have greater information now. I do want to point out that there are approximately 80,000 individuals in Washtenaw County who are included in that 1B phase. This is the information that's been provided to us from Washtenaw County Health Department. About 15,000 of those are educators and all of those associated with schooling in Washtenaw County. And some 4,100 of those are affiliated with Ann Arbor Public Schools. So one of the realities, trustees, that you're very familiar with and that we understand because this is our work, is that the largest district in our county besides the Ann Arbor Public Schools is less than a third of our size. So when we're talking about the scale of the endeavor, certainly in the Ann Arbor Public Schools, anytime our doors are open, if we're on full operations, approximately 25,000 people will leave their home to travel to school. So we take very seriously the responsibility that we have in this community, and we will be very methodical about this process. We will be offering information sessions for our staff so that they have the information they need regarding the vaccine in general. I know that our public health partners are the ones who will be sending information for signups and for how to engage to actually get the vaccine. Our next steps at this time will include, first of all, we just completely understand that there will be many, many questions. You know, when we closed our schools on March 13th, we made our announcement on March 12th, just ahead of the governor's order. The governor's order came about 11:00 PM on March 12th. Our final day of school was March 13th. On that day, we had many, many questions. In April, when we received word from the governor that our schools remain closed by executive order for the remainder of the school, that was at school year, that was another time when we had many more questions than answers. As we moved through the summer and in July saw the uptick in cases that caused us to establish a virtual opening for fall, was another point at which there were many more questions than answers. And now we are here again. On January 13th, having made this announcement, trustees, that we've set our course toward an early March transition. That is our intention. And we are going to use the time between now and the end of February to ensure that every question that we possibly can answer, that we are working together to ensure the best information for our community. So we will be meeting with parents, sending email and other updates to ensure that our parents who are interested in a choice of hybrid in-school learning understand what that learning will look like, all of the particulars around the expectations of returning to school during a COVID pandemic. You know, we've never done this before. And so we will be providing as much information as we can. We'll be introducing parents to the screening tool that will need to be fulfilled. We have trained our staff on the COVID protocols. We will be refreshing their training. We'll be sharing the information about the hybrid cohort assignments so that students and parents understand the days in the groups to which they will be assigned. We'll be getting information to everyone on bus transportation, food delivery, nutrition, student health information, and all of the other details of convening school operations. In addition, we'll be sharing information for those parents who wish to remain in their fully virtual learning option, the option that we've been engaged in through this school year. We know that there will be questions among those parents as well. Clearly, we're not out of this COVID pandemic. As we sit here this evening, Washtenaw County, Region 1, and the entire state of Michigan remain at the highest level of risk, Level E. As of this evening, we were at 220 cases per million and an 8% positivity rate. The county risk calculation, according to the MySafeStart source, is that we remain at Level E in the overall risk calculation. So we are not out of this pandemic yet. And yet, also, with the coming of tools in our toolbox, those tools include additional knowledge and information about how the virus spreads. They include amended mitigation steps. Ms. Bacalord will be sharing more about those at our next meeting. Our super six mitigation steps that we will consistently take in our schools. We will be, we will also be watching the level of community spread so that we are sure to take the safe and healthiest steps as we promised that we would from the beginning. I am confident that our Ann Arbor Public Schools team will rise to this next step. But trustees, we've discussed it a lot in our small group meetings as we prepared for this next step. We understand that a hybrid school development will mean that we continue to fully support the model that we've been on throughout this school year and that we are also building this in-school learning hybrid option. Those plans have been in place. That 256-page plan was set last August. And yet, we will be revisiting that, working with our teachers and our teams. I appreciate all of the collaboration with all five of our employee group leaders. We've been in regular meetings since last spring, and we are together in terms of moving through these next steps and working together to answer the many questions that are outlined. I know that making these next steps to offering the in-school hybrid learning opportunity will be a complex set of information. I do understand and hear from community members that they've been less than satisfied, some of them, with our communication. And yet, we are sharing the information that we have confirmed and information as we know it. Now that we're moving into this next phase, we will be meeting about the questions around these next steps. I know that this transition will require the very best of all of us. And I also know and understand that folks are weary. I hear it in parents. I certainly know it in our teachers, our school staffs, our leaders. The trustees have been at the table every week since mid-March, and I know there is weariness all around. And yet, we will rise now to move into this next phase, knowing that it will lay a strong foundation for a full recovery as we move forward through this time. So with that, trustees, I thank everyone who's been involved throughout this process and appreciate the engagement and all the folks who've written emails and reached out for public commentary, all those who've attended meetings that were engaged in. I appreciate the trustees who've met with many of our parents who've reached out. We are working our way through a 100-year pandemic, and we are doing the very best that we can. And we understand that at many points, that's not enough to satisfy the need. And yet, we will continue to rise to this task. So with that, trustees, I'm ready. And my team is on standby to receive your questions. I do want to point out that the end of the month, board meeting is our regular time to update the extended continuity of learning plan as we've done every month since the beginning of this emergency school management process. And we will be bringing on January 27th, we have school teams and teacher teams and employee group leader teams and instructional teams, and they will be putting the finer points on our final preparations. We will bring those forward at the end of January. We will use February as a community engagement month to ensure that our parents are receiving all of the information that we possibly can give as they consider their next steps and their next decisions. We will continue to publish our frequently asked questions. The email volume is not such that we can always respond to every single email, but we do review those emails and we work those questions into our weekly update of frequently asked questions. And we'll be working on one of those updates again for this Friday as we try to do on most weeks. So we will be reviewing as much as we can to continue to share information as we move through these coming weeks. So with that, trustees, we're ready for your questions. The team is standing by. We may, as you all well know, have to say we don't for sure know that answer yet, but we will note all of the questions for responses as we move through this coming week. Thank you.
So the first question, well, first off, thanks for the, thanks for the report and thanks for all of your, your hard work on this. Thanks to the trustees, the great questions as well. You know, we keep hearing, you know, in public commentary, you don't have a plan, you don't have a plan. And I think in many cases, what, what people think is because we haven't stated a date that there is no plan. But you've also mentioned the 256-page plan that we had to pass by law back in the summer. And, and so I wanted to, to ask, where can people find this 256-page plan so that they can refer to it when someone tells them that Ann Arbor Public Schools doesn't have a plan?
Thank you, President Johnson. If you go to, it's right off of the front page. Click there, and right in there is the Extended COVID-19 Continuity of Learning Plan in all of its glory. It's right there. It is also by law on the transparency. So we'll show you both places that you can see it. By law, it's on the transparency, that pop-up that comes up when you open the website. That's where the, the state requires it to be. We thought it was awkward for it to not be over with our instructional reimagine plan. So you see, it's about halfway down here, the Extended Continuity of Learning Plan. And that's the summary there, Mr. Clulley. But I know we've also got the full, the full plan there.
People don't want to read 256 pages, which is why summaries are given. But didn't want to highlight that, that we do have a plan and have had a plan for a long time. And just because people don't say we, say we don't have a plan, doesn't mean we don't have a plan. So thank you for that. My next question, you know, we, we hear statements talking about, you know, the governor recommendations versus mandates, you know, that, you know. And, and one thing that I will say is that trustees do meet with the public, and trustee Gainer and I actually met with the group earlier. I guess it was yesterday, time, time goes slow during COVID. But, you know, we hear, hear a lot of things, and people will say, well, the governor mandated that you start on, on March 1st. So you all, you know, are giving a date now. They also, there are also people that are, that are talking about, I mean, people may not believe this, but there are people who are advocating that we go back fully in person, as long as we wear masks, we don't need to social distance, et cetera. Can you speak to whether the March 1st is a mandate by the governor? Is that by law that we need to follow that? And then also, you And then also you talked about, you know, the social distancing and, and those requirements. Are, are those, are those laws that we are bound by, or, or to what extent do we have control over the way that we, um, that we manage both, both those things?
I appreciate that. The governor's statement was that she strongly urged uh school districts in Michigan to open for, to have the goal to open for some in-person instruction, the opportunity for in-person instruction, if possible, by the beginning of March. So it did not carry uh the weight of an executive order. It was a strong urge. I've personally been in contact with the governors, uh, members of the governor's team. We meet regularly as we do our crisis management. Uh, we hear the spirit of her request. We absolutely want to get our children back to school, and we do recognize the challenges of that transition. Um, the requirement to social distance is a part of the governor's executive order. It is also a part of every set of public health guidance around COVID in schools. So there is simply no question that we will need to um have a hybrid plan because uh in our schools with a class of twenty or twenty-five, uh, there's not a way to assure the proper social distancing um with all of the students present at the same time. So we are bound uh as a district. I think you probably saw, trustees, the uh announcement that came out just a few days ago of several organizations, including one school district that were fined, were fined uh for not keeping uh their mitigation protocols. So this is not a nice-to-have or a hope we can do it. We must make the plan. Trustee Baskett uh reminded me the other day of uh Mr. Labsana's diagram that shows where the desks are in the room so that we are sure to keep our social distancing. So I do understand that schools are one of those things that we've all taken for granted, the ability to be able to gather indoors. Um, and so it is very different to understand that we won't have the freedom or the flexibility to be able to break those guidelines. So I really appreciate you asking that question.
Yeah, and, and I really ask that because, you know, I, you know, everyone on this board understands and echoes the sentiment um of those who want to get back to school in person, you know, five days a week like we were before. Um, what we don't want to do, though, is to, is to cherry-pick information and misstate it to, to fit what we want. And, and like I said earlier, you know, there are people that are saying, well, you know, uh, if you're, if you properly mask and you're in school, it's, you know, it, uh, the, the um, that, or the, the virus doesn't spread. Well, that's, you know, the, the low, the, the low transmission that people cite is because they're socially distanced and masked. So before we go any further, that is a mandate. The, the March first that people are saying is a mandate, actually, it's not a mandate, it's a suggestion. So I just wanted to make sure that that was perfectly clear for those who are listening still, um, because we get, you know, we get that comment over and over and wanted to be clear about that. Um, yeah, so, so the last thing I wanted to say is, is, you know, we, I, I heard um some commentary about uh high, sending high schoolers back before spring break because people will travel, et cetera. And one thing that, that I do know in talking to my friends who's, who's um, who attend private schools, et cetera, one thing that they've mentioned is that there is a huge, huge um shared responsibility that those communities have about limiting spread. Um, they have said that no one wants to mess it up for, for the rest of the school. So whether it's dances or, or, you know, meetups at people's houses, et cetera, they decide that they want to do what's right for the whole community. And, and, and so as we talk about, you know, making sure that we don't wait until after spring break because people may go on vacation and come back and spread it, we would hope that people decided not to do that. If you want to go on vacation, act responsibly and, you know, quarantine, get tested, et cetera. So we can't make this, we can't make everyone go earlier because we think that we're going to fail in, in containing the spread because people don't act responsibly. So I didn't want to, want to mention that, and I, and I hate to sound like the stern dad and stuff, and that's not really the, the goal, but, but what we want to do is to make sure that we are, you know, keeping our community, our teachers, our students um safe. And so, uh, so I just wanted to share that thought as well. Trustees, any other questions? All right. Good job. New trustees, great job. That's like the, the first, your first uh go-around with that. You all did really well. Keep it up. I, I won't haze you forever. This is one meeting. Okay, great.